One nation, under God, individual, political, and justice for all.
This remains standing. Unfortunately, it's moment of silence for three different individuals. Leon Slazinski was a village resident, former village of Ocean Beach officer, Jim Ledard Senior, and Skippey. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I may, let me just say one word to Leon. When we moved to Goshen, we were the first people on our block who had not built the house that they were living in. And we lived next door to a very old couple. He was an old reverend and had been retired for like 25 years. And when he died, Mr. Doyle, when he died, his wife called Geer, who she called Billy for some reason. I think Geer was too strange for him. And Leon came over and he was the gentlest soul in dealing with telling the woman that her wife, that her husband was dead. And Dr. Keys came over in his pajamas, put his coat on top. It's a bygone time, but he was a police officer who served under my chief, you know, a legend, and was an extremely sensitive man to the people he served.
Definitely be missed. All right, I'm going to ask for motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, welcome everyone to the February 13th Village Board meeting. First, the Village Board minutes from January 23rd, 2012. Just to be clear, Joel, these aren't the ones that you emailed me about, so. And why do you think we're approving the ones you already is a concern about before we discuss it? Any errors or omissions? Here now, last for motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
All right, communications. We have a letter from Robert Dickover, the race director from the Great American Weekend 5K, to your Village Board of Trustees on behalf of the Goshen Rotary Club and as a race director for the Great American Weekend Road Races. Please accept this letter as our formal request to the village to hold the annual road races in January-June 30th, 2012. Race registration will begin at 6:00 AM. The races will begin at 8:00 AM. The races should conclude by 11:00 AM. The race will be held on Green Street and finish in front of a surrogate court following the same race routes in the past several years. The assurance for the village will be secured and a certificate naming the village will be provided. Thank you for your anticipated consent. Always a great event. They've done it for a number of years. He's done through Rotary and they always doing this job to help the community. Chief Water viewed this. He has no major concerns, however, he wants us to make sure that they secure proper police protection in the town of Goshen. As it starts, the village goes on to the town. And they've done this in the past, but he believes we should get the confirmation from the the road race committee that they will have that coverage out there just to protect the village. And I think that's a good idea. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this pending approval by the police chief. Motion?
So moved.
Well, discussion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I just, my, so... Are they paying for services for this?
They didn't last year because it was right when we were talking about that policy and we don't want to end at 11:00 hour. We haven't formally discussed this in terms of Great American Weekend being a village event, not a village event. So it's still up for discussion. I figure I'll leave it to see how the board feels about that.
I would say that I believe that they were aware of the town's position before the race. Rob came up to me out of directing traffic and told me he... We hadn't formulated our policy at that point, but he told me in no uncertain terms that they were never going to have the race again because they will be in charge for the police protection. But obviously, they were aware of it. They must have rethought their position since the conversation.
Well, I think Rob has resigned as race director pretty much after every race every year because that's what's happening. And he comes back and does it. So if the board is, and just for everyone's identification, I have seen well Rob as my partner. If the board is considering asking for or making a requirement of your approval, you know, a financial payment returned by overtime, you should make that a condition of your resolution, just so. One of his biggest creeps, I can tell you, or biggest complaints last year was that the town approved, provided police protection, and then told him two weeks before the race that he was going to have to pay for police services. So if it's the board's position, or even that you want to reserve the right to impose that, I think you should just make it a condition of your resolution now. So it's clear before any kind of literature or applications go out that establishes the price because people pay. It's a fundraiser for Rotary, but people pay to run the race. So that may have some sort of impact on the fee that's charged to the...
Sure.
Yeah, and I think the point I was trying to make was that my conversation with him made it pretty clear that they were aware that we were also going to charge and give the charge them last year because we were just formulating the policy, but it was pretty clear that we were going to charge them forward. And obviously, as most organizations around here, they've made adjustments. Obviously, the St. Patrick's Day Parade has made efforts to raise the money in other ways. And I said last year that in favor of that policy, I think it's a good policy. And there are a lot of us like me who believe in these events. We're going to go in our pocket and try to help them, but the tax, but we don't believe the taxpayers should pay for these the use of the police. And these organizations that are going to do these events are going to have to figure out ways to get the public that supports them to pay for it.
Well, I thought that our stand on the whole thing was, other than the I guess it was Memorial Day parade?
Yeah.
That anything else, any other event, folks got to pay.
No, I mean, I agree. I think they should have to pay for the overtime.
So, so Dr. Woman made a motion taking into consideration what our attorney has said. I would just amend my motion to include the fact that I don't mean that we do this, but our condition on the fact that they will pay for any police overtime has occurred.
Okay, since you admitted your motion, I'm going to reconsider that.
Yes, and now we have the motion on the floor. So the question we cause, as I see it, this is part of the Great American Weekend?
Well, that's, that's the question. Because when we had originally talked about it, I think we discussed the distinction between Goshen-based events for the Goshen community and those from outside, like the St. Patrick's Day or the leukemia lymphoma site coming in, Great American Weekend maybe being internal. But the question is, is this road race, this is, that's a fundraiser for Rotary, separate from the Great American Weekend?
Yes.
And so, that's all I'm looking about, I just...
I do too, and I think that's why I wanted to make a comment. I can appreciate us wanting to be facilitatory as we can to keep all of our events that are Goshen-based going. But it's a fundraiser. And as a fundraiser for another entity, I think that they have to be subject for equal application of the law. I think we would have to apply it to them as well. And as Mal says, it doesn't mean that we can't help them raise the funds, you know, anticipate whatever fundraising they do.
I mean, I'm going to be at Kelly Jean's for the fundraiser for the St. Patrick's Day Parade. But in kind of caveat that, I mean, it's kind of simple on their end of it. I mean, I don't, I don't remember how much this cost. I mean, my wife's ran this race since Great American Weekend started. And with the exception of the year she was in Iraq. And she ran last summer on the Fourth of July. And, you know, it's 35 bucks or 30 bucks or 40 bucks or whatever it is, so make it. I mean, if they want to do it, make it $45 and, and, I mean, it's their, it's their event. I mean, they don't have to go out and, you know, hold raffles or something to do it. The people are going to come and run it. As a matter of fact, there's a bunch of people that my wife's already got lined up. They're planning on running the race with, their little road running crew.
Well, I think their, their point to me, which is well-taken, is that it is a charitable event and money that they raised goes along with all the other things that Rotary does. But in keeping with our policy during what we've talked about, basically, they have a couple of choices. They can, now as a person who ran, ran a ton of road races in my day when I was running marathons, they've gone up quite a bit in price from the old days when I used to pay 10 or 15 bucks. I don't know how much they, whether they can raise the price enough to cover what it costs to cover the police officers. And then they're going to have the other issue, which is in the chief's comments.
The town.
We have our police officers. They're here, you know, it'll be whatever it be. But there seems to be some issue with whether the town is... The town isn't going to cover that even if
Well, that's a problem.
There's not going to be a race.
That, that's correct. I mean, certainly Rotary's not going to take the liability that would exist if they didn't have, you know, police coverage at the intersections or where people cross the road and all that kind of stuff, so. That, that would be...
Did they ultimately have police from the town last year?
Yes, they paid to.
Yeah, they paid the town.
Well, I was directing traffic, so I'm aware of the fact that they were out there.
Yeah, I think the chief put that in just so we maybe formalize the fact that they're going to have officers out there so they can provide you to protect ourselves.
Without prolonging this too much further, I just want to add the one other thing that going along with what Marcia said is that however you try to look at this, we have to be consistent with our policy. And if you take just the Romano Foundation race, we can't charge the Romano Foundation to do that race.
And not charge others. They're all fundraisers.
Yeah, we just can't do it.
And as hard as it may be to do that, the fact of the matter is IBN's not going to permit everyone to fundraise it so the CEO can get a bigger bonus.
Right.
Right, which, you know, everyone that runs the race is trying to raise money for some sort of charitable cause. And you can't say, I like this cause, but not the other cause. So I think your policy for a Goshen, like a Goshen event, like the Great American Weekend is a good policy, but everyone else?
Sure.
You know, I think Rob won't like it, but they have that many.
Difficult as it is.
I think we have a sense of the board. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or call vote? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is something actually doesn't have a direct impact on villages. I'll paraphrase it because it's a lot of words in front of you. Basically, the New York State Senate passed a law that says that towns now have the ability to enact their speed limits on town roads. Currently, villages, we can enact speed limits, cities can enact speed limits. Towns, for whatever reason, don't have that ability. So this law would allow that for the first time. And I think it's just a good show of support for, not just the town of Goshen, but all towns in the area to kind of jump on the bandwagon and support this formally with a resolution.
So David, the result of this is that the town's speed on a town road and the town gets the money.
The town, I mean, let me tell you, I see this all the time in Hintonburg where you have residents who live on a town road. They come to a meeting and they say, hey, you know, the speed limit's 45. You know, people are getting run off the road and, you know, it's dangerous when it's 45. People do 55. Can't you reduce the speed limit to 30? And it's almost impossible now because it used to be only you would at least write a letter and then they would probably turn you down anyway. But now they require a traffic study to be performed on the town road before they're leaving. Consider your request, which is crazy, which is absolutely crazy. So even though it has no direct impact on the villages, the mayor said, this is, this is a good thing for towns because they know the roads better than anybody. And, you know, if they want to lower the speed limit, they, they should be able to do that and not have to petition the DOT and incur the course of traffic study before they can even ask for reductions.
So my thought was just because it's a positive law and, you know, village residents are also town residents, it'd be a nice gesture for us to pass the show of support.
Yeah, but I don't think that this even has any, any application to us if you read it.
No, it hasn't.
No, it's strictly for towns.
No, I understand that. It doesn't even have any application to the town of Goshen because the town of Goshen doesn't have a population of 50,000 or more.
No, if they're 50,000 or more, they can set their speed limit.
It's under that that's going to cover.
Now everyone's got it covered.
That's not the way I read this, but maybe I'm reading it wrong. It says there's 24 towns and suburban-class towns with the beat the population, but there's the remaining 852 towns in New York that don't meet the the population criteria are prohibited from addressing speed limits.
That's what this new law is going to provide to the 852 towns now. So they can also do it.
So the town of Goshen will fall under one of the ones that does not have that power to avoid after the fact? Is the board in favor of us passing a resolution on this?
Sure.
I'm going to throw it out there.
Sure.
All right, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, we have abstract of vouchers. Bills as examined by members of the board were approved in accordance with abstract 2011-2012 number 21. Check numbers 2855 through 2945 in the amount of $247,081.06. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? And just to remind our public, these are all bills that have previously been examined and authorized by three trustees and got through the proper village protocols. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on. We have a list of village of Goshen owned properties in the town of Goshen. This will continue to make them tax exempt. I'll just read through it. Village of Goshen owns property designated as 13132.61, 1518, 15148, 15150, 61143. And whereas the above described property is used by the village of Goshen for water supply purposes for its residents and others who use state and county facilities within the village. And whereas the county legislature has exempted the described properties from county taxation in the past, now therefore be resolved that the village of Goshen is requesting the legislature of Orange County to exempt the described property from county taxation for the year 2013 in view of its use for municipal purposes. Just to make sure our own property remains off the tax rules.
Yeah.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's the same list that we do every year.
I take it the last one in the town hall killer is the Crystal Run property.
Yes.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. In our last, last work session, we discussed a letter we got from Matt Associates asking for a handicap parking spot on 252 Main Street. The board members agreed with that, but we have to pass a local law or hold a public hearing to make it a handicap spot. So we decided that tonight, as opposed to at our work session, we would pass that. And Trustee Matthews brought up a good thought before that. We'll schedule this tonight, but we still need to look at things such as curb cut and other things that could put on some expense. I'll ask for motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. The Village Board hereby resolves to hold a public hearing on February 27th at 7:30 PM for the consideration of the installation on the designated handicap parking space at the front side of 252 Main Street. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, last item of business, there's a D.C. grant available to help with some mitigation from tropical storm Lee and Hurricane Irene. This is, it's limited in its scope, but my thought was, and I know John will work and Superintendent Nuzleis today on it, that even though there's nothing that is necessarily a home run for the villagers, there's no cost for the villagers applying, and there's two projects we're going to look into. One involving the Rio, or actually both technically involving the Rio. Do you want to speak to this, John, briefly?
I'll jumble my words and... Oh, you're doing a fine job. No, we do mean. And it is an application you make to the county. The county then turns around and makes it to the state environmental conservation. They work from 300 to 500,000 dollars. It's for those projects that were not funded by FEMA during the initial Lee tropical storm. There were two projects we had talked about. One was the Rio, which was cleaning out all the debris that had created from the storm, basically the gravel channels and all the debris. The second one was looking into doing the bypass for the Rio that the village had looked at several years ago and creating a secondary flow for the water during these heavy rain events. So my office is putting these two maps together, description of the project, which is currently limited, and then we have to submit by Wednesday. And then the county will then submit that to the state and then the state will review it.
So this is just to make sure we're, any possible revenue streams we're looking into. Those are the projects that John Bell and Michael's wealth would be the best uses for this. So...
You know, it does have, you know, a litany of different things that it can be used for. My question is, is if you get a grant from this, what kind of D.C. permits to go with it?
Well, you would have to, you would have to get a permit.
You wouldn't be exempt from...
You're not exempt from any of the permits.
So you still got to do that and then...
But again, the Rio is a Class C stream.
Okay.
So you do not need a D.C. permit to go in there. We're certainly notifying. They're aware of it. But you could do that with limited permitting on both projects.
And it's restoration?
Yes.
It's restoration. It's not great. That portion of it is not creating anything new. It was restoration of existing.
Yeah, again, you know, that's why I stress it's not a slam dunk, so to speak. You know, sometimes you see grants and you say, this is perfect. And I think we have a very good shot, but I like to manage expectations and, you know, but I think that, you know, we're going to get some good work done and we'll submit and we'll see what happens. I think we are to our residents to at least try.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, any further discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve us submitting these applications.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Very good. Trustee comments? I'll start with Trustee Matthews.
Okay, I would first like to say that we had a water main break on Murray Avenue. Yes, Dan, it was Dix. And that we had the cruiser out cleaning out the brush around Green Hill Dam and that they're out reading water meters for the North Church building. As well, we had a conversation with O and R after their tree crew disappeared. They needed our help or something, and so we negotiated with them to come back and finish the tree list that they had left us with. And so they had come back. And hopefully, everyone who they permitted to will be able to have their tree taken again. The other thing was Michael and I discussed the, you know, the new pump house, the exterior, things that were moved up out of the hole up on Wallace Park for the North Church Street pump station has left more minutia on top and it's more piping. And Michael and I discussed a way to build a little, not a shed, but a little coverage that will be more appealing than the way it looks right now so that the park stays. It's good luck in this pot, we can, and we'll protect the stuff that's outside. Isn't that correct, Mal? Is that?
Okay, thank you. Trustee Stewart?
Activities at the Department of Public Works for the last couple of weeks. The guardrail that we talked about is voted on that was installed at the intersection of High Street and Prospect Avenue. Also, a drain has been installed on Spring Street to alleviate icy conditions up there.
Trustee Charlie? All is very good in the world of the police. Okay. Trustee Smith?
All right, just have a few quick things tonight. First, because I know Joel asked this last time and he said he's going to ask him tonight, two things. Billy had asked about the total cost for the town sewer arbitration, including attorneys' fees, arbiter fees, expert testimony and all that. For 2011, it was $28,480. For 2012, it was $37,140.75. You'd also asked about the total stockpile removal costs. For 2011, it was $5,070,685. And for 2012, it was $4,131,767.13. So you had asked about that and any follow-up questions, you know, by all means, if there is citizen comments. Mike Nuzleis and I have been talking about parking signs. Neil, you had actually brought this up via Joel at one of the other meetings. I think you might have talked about it since. So we're going through inspecting all the municipal lots in the village to find out if better, more visible signage would be useful. I can just say, I've lived in Goshen for a very long time. I didn't know that the lot on Railroad Avenue by Stephen Polatano's office was a municipal lot, but it was just the office bought a lot.
Oh, yeah.
So I think we definitely could increase the signage for those. So Mike's looking into that, looking into some prices. Because I think that'd be a positive thing to help downtown businesses and let people know. And if we move forward with that, I thought it might be kind of nice just as a side project that I would just take on as an individual. Maybe we could put together a little handheld map to give to businesses to show where all the municipal lots were in the village. So as we get more information on that stuff, I'll get that to the board and we can discuss it in further detail. Something, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but maybe something board members could meditate on over the next few weeks. You know, we all know deer has been just out of control in the village for a number of years. So I don't know legality, and maybe David talked about this elsewhere before, about enacting a local law for being people feeding the deer in the municipality.
People feeding the deer should be shot.
That's a little more extreme than I was thinking.
Why did you bring this up? Because yesterday I was driving, I turned out of, off Gregory Drive onto North Church Street. And there was deer running along, a herd. There was like eight of them running. And they cut through this backyard just before the end of Gregory Drive, popped out in the road, and I'm riding alongside them and they're running as fast as I'm going. And when they lay in a minivan, blew one out right there, right there, you know, they, the whole truck, trail, the whole, a lot of them went right across the road. And she whacked one. Did some significant, probably a couple thousand dollars.
By the old hotel.
They do. You can track them. In fact, we did discuss this years ago when I was there. And we contacted the county conservation club to do some hunting outside of the village limits because they know where they are. They're all coming from the wetlands that are ordered by Kip Road and coming down through, you can track them. They're right behind a school and through, stopping at my backyard and then going up to where the old hotel was. And from there, they know exactly where they are. The scariest thing is that they now come out walking down Lincoln Avenue at 4:00 in the afternoon. That's high traffic time. And that's when kids are getting out of school. That's how used to eating what people have planted in their gardens.
Yeah, I guess it's probably what...
I mean, it's not like there was a green out there.
It's probably what, maybe 10 years now, that they're just everywhere. They walk down the streets. They're, I have eight or 10 in my backyard every morning. I come home at night at 5:00 at night, you know, walking down the middle of Gregory Drive, eight or 10 of them.
So I mean, I think there's definitely a problem and I want to know illusions that not a lot of people to feed them is going to make any dramatic changes, but I think it's a step in the right direction. And if the board's in favor of me exploring this, talking to David Moore, potentially putting in a local law, I'll pursue that. I just wanted to talk to everyone first and...
I think we should see what other next step we could discuss at the same time. If we are discussing this, perhaps discuss what other next step we could take.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, I know that maybe two years ago now, Hormon Hudson did a controlled hunt, which scares me. But if something like that works and there's a safe way of doing it, you know, maybe it's worth discussing as a board. So I'll look into that and if anyone else has any other ideas they see out there, you know. So everyone's okay with me looking into that?
Sure.
Okay. Very good. Two last quick things. The signage committee has been meeting very often. We actually have five members of the committee in the room right now. So a strong showing. But I think it'd be helpful to get the signage committee in for a work session to kind of bring the village board up to speed. I will be discussing directions, things are going in. You know, we all agree on everything, but I think we'll move this board to hear the different thoughts that are coming from the signage committee. So I'd like to bring them in for the first work session in March, if that's okay with this board. Okay? And today I met with the Goshen Interface Council who also brought up the naming of street for Martin Luther King Jr., as has been mentioned here in the past. And they were open to speak to the board. So if the board's in favor, I'm going to invite them in for a work session that same night, probably the second half of the evening so they can speak to the board directly.
Sure.
But it was a very productive meeting. They have some outside the box ideas about how to potentially make it work. But I'll let the board, I'll hear from them directly. And that's all I have. Citizen comments? Are we done?
Oh, hold on. Being gentile again. Hold on just a second here. Oh, please, don't shut up. I had a couple of items from your comments. There we go. On the... You covered the expense of the arbitration. Thank you. I'll get the specific numbers off the recording. The, I had asked at the beginning of January about the past board members participating in the health plan. Do you have any further information about that?
I, I don't really. So Mike, do you have any chance? Any past...
Any past board members paying off insurance?
No.
No, you don't.
No, they're not eligible.
Oh, they're not eligible, okay. There you go.
On the grant from the, is that a D E C grant or a FEMA grant?
D E C. It only covers non FEMA expenses.
Non FEMA expenses. Is there a dollar amount limit on that?
It's a minimum of $300,000, max to $500. Correct.
Three to five.
But that, I think that also limits on a county basis as well. Grants will range from a minimum of $300,000 to $500,000 per county for eligible projects. So I'm not sure if that'll be the aggregate of what Orange County submits or individual projects.
Sure.
But, you know, it's not unlimited, so.
So this is a county application to the D E C which we are joining, or?
The county is eligible. The county is eligible, and I think that they raise a good point, that by everyone submitting together, it'll make a stronger application.
So we can't apply for a $300,000 project in the village of Goshen?
I think that the projects we are going to apply for will probably be at that rate.
But it won't be done through the county.
Right.
Okay, great. Which brings me to another question I had with regard to that. John mentioned the Rio. Are we talking about both branches of the Rio, east and west, or simply the finance pond outlet? And do we have any more specific plans beyond just let's address the Rio? Do we have any sort of skeletal plans for doing that work at this point?
Well, the bypass would be from where the Rio kind of leaves finance and travels out towards the senior center area.
Goes on to the.
Correct. And the general cleaning, I believe, is essentially length of the Rio or as much as no fund? Yeah, as much as no fund. I mean, we'll put a map together tomorrow, and we'll get, but it's probably the main branch.
Because the east branch here for the county also does not drain well, and we all know that behind the county building, there was quite extensive flooding.
And we also have the Rio that runs right by the P P W garage.
That's the same branch.
Yeah, I know, and that's where we already had things that we could fix that, you know, need the attention, that were hurt during the flooding.
We're saying the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would hope that both would be addressed. As you know, I have been beating the drum for a long time, that the area between finance pond and host office desperately needs attention. Really, the future of the entire village depends on conquering that problem. Have you had any communication with the county about their using the jail as a bus depot?
I believe that the chief has had conversations with individuals there, but I don't want to speak for it.
Because that's still ongoing. There's still parking buses there. And as far as I know, because I haven't heard anything to the contrary, there's never been a communication with the village of Goshen, and I believe that Mr. Diana just did that without going through any sort of a secret process. And they may be a superior form of government to the village of Goshen, but that doesn't exempt them from state law.
I don't want superior to be the right word.
It's a higher level.
Larger. Higher form of government. So. What are you asking? I mean, you've asked this before and I can't go back.
I suggested previously that you have a conversation with Mr. Diana and let him know it's not acceptable to just go ahead and do that at a minimum. And certainly, at this point, with the Port Jervis line being back online, that's a private bus company over there, that's not the county, they lease that, the short line, for a dollar. You have a private company using property in the village of Goshen as a bus depot, which has not been sanctioned by our planning board, our E R B, the state, it's just being done by Mr. Diana without any communication whatsoever with anybody. At the very least, I feel there should be some communication from this board to Mr. Diana expressing displeasure. I certainly know that the Public Services Committee, people in the legislature have had, physical services, can you grab, have had communication, and Mr. Bohqui in particular is not happy with the situation. I haven't spoken to him recently, but I know that he had some communication. They've had a lot on their plate lately, not at the top of their list. You're going to make me ask this, aren't you? The consent order on fines and the compliance conference, eh?
If you're honest with me. Sure. That remains under discussion. I mean, we have had communication with the A G as recently as last week and as recently as today. So I think, believe it or not, Joel will be in a position in the relative near future to have information that we can put out in the public that will be pretty solid as to the direction that this is going to take, in terms of the dollar amount of the fines and, you know, when the consent order is going to be signed.
Ken, is it fair to extract from parsing that, that there definitely are going to be fines and there definitely will be a consent order?
Yes, yes. David said that in the past as well.
But situations are malleable.
Situations are malleable, and one of the things, Joel, that's under consideration is whether or not we can offset a portion of those fines to do other projects that would be environmentally beneficial to the village. So with the money, what that dollar figure may be, just doesn't go into the state coffers, that there would be some benefit to the community, some environmental benefit. And that's really the last piece of the puzzle, and why I don't really want to get into the numbers, because it's going to be, part of it will be how much the state will allow us to contribute toward that project, what that project, what that project will be is not going to finally prove yet either. So those are kind of the final pieces of the puzzle.
And are we still discussing the linkage between the sewer outflows and the contaminated dirt removal?
Well, linkage between the two, only to the extent that I would assume that the consent orders would be two separate consent orders signed at about the same time. So I think that will be the linkage.
I had asked at the last meeting about the name of the firm, who's handling the situation at the dam, and whether or not there was an assessment of the condition that has taken place so far. That part of my question never did get answered. Has there been any rough assessment of the degree of damage and the condition of the dam at this point? Obviously, the survey is integral to a more detailed report.
Sure. Mr. Ward, can you speak to that?
I'm not aware of any.
I spoke to this the last time you asked the question. I was here, and I spoke to him, I didn't even touch you on it, but, but he spoke to it the last time you raised the question. And I think that the analysis that he referred to and the repair work that had been done, which was really a lot of cleaning up of things, was at that point when we had been reviewed again by the D E C, if I'm not mistaken, because I don't have it in front of me, but that they were pleased with the amount of work that had been done, and plans for future were under discussion. That's as far as I know that we went at that point. But I can get the letter, you know.
Maybe I'm just not smart enough to understand it, but what does that say about the condition of the dam?
You're looking for, from the D E C's analysis of the dam. They do an analysis, they gave us remediation that needed to be attended to, we attended to the remediation that they requested, they were happy with our work. That's as far as I recall the memo, I do not have the leverage.
Then I'm not understanding something, because at the last meeting, John asked for funds to do surveying of the dam, which I understood was so that the, what is the proper term again, a geotechnologist?
A geotechnical engineer.
Geotechnical engineer. Could do the evaluation of the condition of the situation. Now, did I misunderstand something or?
No, if I meant, we'll correct it, yes. There was, there's two phases of the project. At first, the D E C came in, they did their assessment of the dam. As part of that, that they requested an overall analysis that the dam be conducted. In order to conduct that, we went to this board and basically the geotechnical engineer said they needed a detailed survey of the entire dam before they can complete their analysis. That has now been completed, submitted, preliminary survey information has been provided to them, and they are continuing with their analysis of the dam.
It's phase two of the cleanup, where we got the clean bill.
Yes.
For our work.
Yes, and to my knowledge, no preliminary report has been issued yet by those engineers.
And that report will come to the board or will go to the D E C?
It would come to this board.
Or.
Is it a report required by the D E C? Or is something that we are doing for our own purposes?
It is. Don't answer it if you don't know, they have.
Yeah, I really.
We'll line out for you, Joel.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Deal.
I think it's beautiful that you're considering naming a bullet guard or a street after Reverend Martin Luther King. I'd be really proud to live in a village that had a street named after him.
I appreciate that, I just wanted to be very clear, with the board still needs to meet with the council before, I don't know.
Well, I understand that.
Any which way, because the board hasn't formally just, you know.
I think it's beautiful.
I appreciate what you're saying.
That you're even entertaining the notion or having that dialogue.
I appreciate that.
It'd be even more beautiful if it actually happened, but.
Thank you very much.
Personally, I'm very happy about that.
Wonderful. All right, any other?
And thank you for taking that under your consideration.
Any other citizen comments? All right, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.